I know they resolution.
Right. First thing that's what we're discussing. Seeing on the budget. Right. I don't think it now. It's just some of this stuff I'm saying is gonna make their agenda. Yeah, hopefully the.
I think it's Juneteenth.
Juneteenth, I hope for the tribe wanna make it.
It's a lot.
We need to go and get started on that one.
But if we be able to vote on. Mon- money check. Anything. Anything is.
I agree.
Hey, baby, I won't be here today.
Shut it down for it. Do that. Come to the shoulder.
Me? What you say, ma'am? We need. You know, we had a.
I thought you were here the number now.
Well, we're number number. So you have.
Oh, okay, okay.
Official time.
Recording in progress.
We're gonna go ahead and call the Ways and Means Committee meeting to order. Today is Monday, June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. It's approximately five twenty-six P M. We do not have anything on the agenda for Ways and Means. Uh, unless one has something from the floor. All right. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry. Councilmember Lockett.
There's a, there's a budget adjustment. That I, I guess. See. The adjustment.
Which, which one?
Let me see, uh, which one. Yeah, the budget adjustment is related to the Juneteenth.
Oh, okay.
He got that one. Bruce.
Oh, it's in there. Oh, there it is, I'm sorry. Okay. All right. Yes.
That has to be put on the agenda.
Put on the agenda.
Let me ask you something.
Okay.
How are we doing budget adjustments now that they are resolutions? How are, how is Ways and Means gonna entertain budget adjustments going forward? You can't hear me? My question. Councilmember Brown.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, how? Are we going to deal with, um, budget adjustments going forward? Since budget adjustments are now resolutions that have to be on the agenda? Do we entertain them doing Ways and Means after we've put them on the agenda? And they be considered the next meeting? Or how?
That hasn't changed yet. And I think that as we're looking at. Any changes to the, um, code as it relates to the procedural.
Talk to the mic.
Um, above.
Yeah.
Is this?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, bottom line is we didn't change any of that yet. Nothing has changed.
Everything has changed, Madam Mayor. When the budget adjustment is a resolution and resolutions ought to be put on the agenda? You have a, a way of dealing with resolutions. So we have to find out. So tonight is an interesting, since they're not on the, they're not on the agenda? And we have to put them on the agenda? It can't go through Ways and Means tonight? Because it's not on the agenda. Resolutions must be on the agenda. So that, that's just a problematic thing that we had not discussed, but the issue we have now is the resolution that adjusts Parks and Rec's budget hasn't been added to the agenda. So I take it that we can't discuss it in Ways and Means.
Well, we, we, we've been doing that and I guess all I'm suggesting is that, um, I don't know why we couldn't hear it in, in Ways and Means because before anything goes to you all in Ways and Means or in administration or whatever, we take it to committee, then committee sends it to the city. Ways and Means heard it today, right now, as this is when these meetings are scheduled? Then what, I don't understand what would, why, what change is expected?
Well, we used to dispense with budget adjustments during the Ways and Means committee.
Right.
Once we created legislation that made all budget adjustments resolutions.
Right.
Now they must be put on the agenda. So the issue is that if the budget adjustment is not on the agenda? Then looks like it can't be considered in, in tonight's meeting unless we discuss it and.
But what this, what I'm asking is if. If resolutions go to committee before they go on the agenda of a full council meeting? As it, as a, as a, in general? Why would that change? And if the ordinance that was created to require that budget adjustments be, um, performed through the resolution process? Like, why would the resolution process change just for this?
Well, that's what I'm saying, that the resolution process is that normally the resolution goes to committee and then is put on the agenda.
Right, and so if he wanted to hear it in committee? And then? The committee hears it? And then we go into the city council meeting? And then we vote to put it on the agenda? I'm, I'm just, like, I don't understand what the difference would be.
Well, what we'll do, uh, you know, and I, and that's my mistake. They just didn't realize about, um, the budget adjustment here. So what we'll do is we'll entertain the resolution in Ways and Means. Get a recommendation from the committee? And then that, then we'll go forward with that.
That'd be great.
Okay. All right.
Well, I say this, but lately y'all been just, you all been just bringing it all the way through without a committee meeting. You know, you can't do that.
When?
I mean, this, this one here was headed straight to the, the floor.
No, he just didn't see it. And now that he saw it, he's saying he'll entertain it. We haven't been doing that.
All right, so we have a, uh, resolution amending twenty twenty-five municipal budget to transfer funds from the building maintenance account to the parks and recreation account to pay for the rental of a tent for the Juneteenth celebration. Uh, this is, um, and the budget adjustment is on the backside of this. The total is, uh, ten thousand dollars. And that is coming from building maintenance and it's going to parks and recreation. Now, in the, now, Mayor, in the current budget, it says it's, uh, three thousand dollars already there? And then we're, so we're taking ten and putting.
Right, we're, we're, what we wanted to do was go ahead and move ten since we're in the middle of spring summer, um, activities and because the budget has been impacted so greatly by some of the, um, uh, irregularities? We wanted to go ahead and, um, put more than enough, uh, for the Juneteenth partnership with U A P B in that event. And in the event that something else occurs that Parks needs to address, the funds will be there.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So any recommendations from the committee?
I can maybe I just make a motion and just do a due pass.
Okay, can I get a second?
I said, I said.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, um, to, uh, send a resolution amending twenty twenty-five municipal budget for parks and recreation for the Juneteenth celebration, move that on to the full council with a due pass?
So moved.
Second.
All right. And so have a due pass on that. Do we have anything else for Ways and Means?
Uh, no, sir, Mr. Chair.
All right, uh, hearing, uh, no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So who?
Second.
All right, Ways and Means is adjourned.
Ordinance resolution, all of you, please look at your packet. Number one is up for the second reading, two, three, four, five are all resolution that'll be completed on tonight. If you look what is in front of you. A resolution amending the twenty twenty-five municipal budget to transfer funds from the building maintenance account to the parks and recreation account to pay for the rental of a tent for the Juneteenth celebration, that would be agenda item number six, if added to the agenda. A resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing that contract with Cato's Trucking, Asphalt and Pavement Incorporated and related purposes, if added to the agenda, that would be agenda item number seven. A resolution waiving competitive selection and authorizing American entry into a contract with Solid Waste Specialist S W S L L C, if added to the agenda, that'd be agenda item number eight. A resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing an agreement with Forbes L L P for auditing services, if added to the agenda, that would be agenda number nine. You should have a, a resolution creating the position of purchaser with the, within the finance department of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. This needs to go before the administration committee on Wednesday when we have our meeting at four P M.
Yes.
Okay.
And if I, if, if I could just say one thing, that's the one, only reason that I brought it forth.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
The only comment that I wanted to make is I, I wanted to acknowledge that we have been through this with other positions. And, um, this is not to circumvent that or to bring it forth again. Um, I received a call from our project manager working on the Tyler Technologies project. And right now we have no centralized anything as it relates to procurement. And while, um, we not only need to make some changes as it relates to that and, um, Councilman Lockett has sent some language and an outline and some of the things that he was suggesting. Um, having the position in place and being able to set out some very specific business processes in terms of how procurement would work with each one of the departments, how it would work with finance, et cetera, is something that we need to outline. So what I wanted to do was put that in place with the assurance and maybe even we make the change to the language um, in the resolution as we, um, uh, look at it in committee? Uh, that we would not hire for the position until January one. But we want to go ahead and put it in position so we can make whatever language changes we need to make in the ordinance code around procurement and purchasing. That's all.
Yes, ma'am, Mayor. Uh, there's nothing else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I did just have one, um, friendly request. I mean, it seems like the past few meetings, it seems like we're having like, um, several resolutions that are. It seems like for the past several meetings, we're having several resolutions that are being, um, given to us like a few minutes before the meeting. And I do understand that, you know, sometimes we miss that twelve o'clock deadline and we can't always get it on the agenda. Um, but I would just like to request that if we can get it on the agenda, let's do so. And then if we're not able to do so, could we at least get like, uh, this email out, maybe like a day in advance? That just, I, I usually like to, you know, do homework on the resolution, ask questions, read through it. Um, so that would just be much appreciated.
And please, yes, and please know that a lot of these are things that are coming to us. We're having to work through the language. And the only way that we are pushing through some of these resolutions that we know has to be, um, unanimously voted on to be even put on the agenda? Are things that are completely non-controversial and that are e- emergency or semi-emergency situations. So that's the only, um, we're not, I'm not putting anything, sending anything to be put that would, um, require, um, lengthy conversation without you all getting it. And as soon as we're able to get the language done, we send it right to you. But we'll do our best to not have to do that, for sure.
Well, Mayor, may I speak? I mentioned to this a while, a while back. You got people behind the scene pushing things through the agenda? And one is a vote on the real quick, y'all, y'all know that. You can't snowball these people in the audience. They, and that's what they do, them bankers send stuff through here, day one.
But, but Councilman, I, I'm setting my name to the things that we're sending through and they have nothing to do with bankers? And it has nothing to do with snowballing anyone. And if you look at these, they are non-controversial? And they are things that need to be done in the administration of city government? Or whether it is, um, a board or commission position? Or whether it is moving money around that has already been appropriated so that we can do things properly and in order in accordance with the auditing, um, laws and regulations? That's it.
They're gonna affect somebody in some kind of way.
Absolutely, which is why the city council has a vote. And if it is deemed to be something that needs to be pulled or not voted on? It won't get an unanimous vote and it'll have to wait anyway.
All I'm saying, we're not in on time, we don't need to put it on.
Yes, but it is in on time if you can make a vote? And you can look at it bef, uh, at the time that we meet? And determine whether or not a unanimous vote can be made? Otherwise you couldn't see it. So I just wanted to make that clear and I'd sure thank you for your question and your comments, Councilman. Thank you.
That includes ordinance and resolution.
Oh.
It does, um, further discussion.
Thank you. Um, so with that, we will, uh.
Oh, wait, let's, let's adjourn it.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Okay. So, um, with that, before we call the meeting to order? We will hear public comments on agenda items. And, uh, Mr. John Finley is the only, um, person, so he can come and you have three minutes. Mr. Finley, thank you.
Hi.
Hey.
My name's John Finley. I, uh, own one of the properties that's up for condemnation today. Um, but, uh, I don't just own this piece of property, I'm also in the process of selling it to the person across the street? Who has agreed to buy it from me for a dollar? And has agreed to, to do the demolition or work on getting it demolished? But, so, so, I mean, you can do whatever you want. But it doesn't affect me at all. I'm, I'm, you know, I, I paid, what, like, I think I paid like two hundred and ninety-seven dollars for this piece of property? Uh, and it had been abandoned and vacant and just neglected for years before this? Cause I bought it at the tax auction, right? So, um, you can do whatever you want, it really doesn't affect me. But it will affect the, the, what happens to this property going forward. I know the condemnation process, uh, makes it more difficult to transfer titles, do all that stuff. Um, and since this person is, is interested in taking ownership of the property and interested in doing the demolition? The only thing you'll be doing is making it more difficult for them. So, uh, this, this leads me to, uh, you know, some of the other things. A lot of the processes that are in place, I mean, the, the, the condemnation of this property comes at an interesting time. It, it, it came just, uh, very soon after I lost my bid for election for mayor. It came at the same time as, uh, condemnation, uh, uh, came up for another piece of property that I bought at the tax auction. I'd owned both of these properties for less than, less than a month or, or less than two months? Out of the years that they'd been neglected? And then as soon as I was not going to be mayor anymore? Code enforcement decided to, uh, place two of my properties up, up for condemnation? That I just barely had purchased. Um, it feels retaliatory to me. Uh, it feels retaliatory, the, the, the way code enforcement is, is treating a lot of the properties that I, that I've, I've purchased. Um, this timing is suspicious. I know that code enforcement is not supposed to, uh, be retaliatory? And there are s- things in the city code to prevent retaliatory actions? Uh, and to prevent them from doing, uh, arbitrary enforcement actions against people? That their, their enforcement actions must be based on citizen complaints. And I find it very suspicious that suddenly, as soon as I buy a couple pieces of property and as soon as I'm not gonna be mayor anymore? Couple of my pieces of property, uh, go on the condemnation, go, come up with condemnation. It's very suspicious to me. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Finley, are you available for any questions?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you can ask me any questions. I, I, actually, actually, I, I have brought with me, um, you know, a lot of the evidence of perjury that I, that I've talked about in the past. Uh, it's all in my backpack right here.
Um, no one else had any questions, I just had a quick one.
Yeah.
Is the person who was gonna purchase the property here?
No, no, they, they said that they're sick. Um, it's, it's, uh, do, do you need her name?
Um, you can share that with me with the other information you were indicating last meeting, couple meetings ago, you said you would share.
Yeah, I've got, I've got it in my backpack, would you like to see the?
No, remember, I'm, I'm conducting this meeting, so remember I said you can contact my office or come anytime to my office.
Well, I did, I did email a copy of the, of the, the, the document to your, uh, uh, staff member.
Okay, I'll talk to you afterward, cause I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay.
So we'll talk.
I, 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 I CC'd, uh, Councilman Mays on this as well.
Yeah, I think we need to take time to look at, hear what he had to say.
Yeah.
You don't need to shove him to the side.
Well, he, nobody's doing that?
Not you, I'm just saying.
Okay.
In, in general.
Okay. Thank you so much for answering my question. Okay. And now we will call our meeting to order this evening, Monday, Janu- June sixteenth. Um, and if we could begin with our invocation, Pastor Brandon Clay of Main Street Church of God and Christ.
Let us pray. Lord, your word says that many are the plans in a man's heart? But it is the Lord's purposes that prevail. So we pray tonight, God, that your purposes would prevail, God, that your name would get the glory? And that your people would be uplifted. We thank you tonight, God, for the providential placement of every council member and these city officials. And we pray tonight, God, that as we gather? That there are, we are not gathering as individuals with competing interests, God, but as stewards of a shared trust? For the well-being of the citizens of Pine Bluff. So tonight, God, we ask that you would grant us the grace to listen deeply? And to speak respectfully? Where there is division, we pray for unity. Where there is conflict? We pray for cooperation, where there is unrest, we pray for peace tonight. Where there is confusion, God, we pray for clarity. Help us to remember, God, that every policy that we shape and every decision that we consider? That it touches lives beyond these walls. So grant us the courage to speak the truth? The strength to defend the truth, God, and the wisdom to legislate the truth? Allow us to exhibit the same care and concern and commitment, God? That you did for people? By dying on the cross of Calvary? We thank you, God, for uplifting this city? For your favor, your peace, your love and your grace? And we're asking you right now, God, that you would allow, uh, cooperation to be the order of the day? Make us one as you and the Father are one. We ask you right now, God, that you would do it for your glory, but for our good? And we thank you for it now. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
And now we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by the cadets from Watson Chapel? Junior R O T C.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On a count of three, we're gonna be saying the Pledge of Allegiance, one, two, three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America? And to the republic for which it stands? One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, and students, before you take your seats, can you all tell us your names?
Good afternoon, I'm Leah Jackson.
I'm Taya Crichfield.
And I am Alia Savage. Thank you so much for leading us tonight.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mays?
Here.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Lockett?
Here.
Councilmember Frazier? Councilmember Brunson?
Here.
Councilmember Denton?
Here.
Councilmember Fields?
Here.
Seven presents, one answer.
Is Councilwoman Frazier online?
No.
No, okay. Okay. And, uh, we have in our packets, uh, the minutes from June second, twenty twenty-five, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the minutes from June second will be approved. Any, um, discussion? All those who vote for approval indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's passed. And now we will move on to committee reporting with Ways and Means. Councilmember Brown, if you will please, uh, render the report.
Thank you, Mayor, Ways and Means met just before this council meeting. Uh, we had one item, um, that we discussed, it's a resolution amending the twenty twenty-five municipal budget? Transfer funds from the building maintenance account to the parks and recreation account? To pay for the rental of a tent for the Juneteenth celebration? This resolution came out of committee with a due pass. And the other thing that I have, um, wanna try to set a, um, a budget meeting? Um, I know we can't do quarter at this point, so we just have to kind of do mid-year? Um, just to kind of get an update on where we are with the budget? Um, I was thinking June twenty-fourth at one o'clock, I don't know if that works for everybody? That's a Tuesday. No? It's gonna be tight? Okay, so, um, I tell you what, let me get with the clerk. Uh. Oh, so that's a bad week? That's a bad week, okay, so, uh, we'll look, I guess, maybe first, first of July? We'll try to get something set up. I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, just kind of know where we are as far as, you know, within the budgets that we have and make sure we're not going over, make sure things aren't coming, coming up short, so. Um, so we can do that, um, I guess, the week after, um, so you'll be back, I guess that week starts, um, June thirtieth? You'll be back that week? Okay, so maybe we'll look at something for that week, maybe we'll get with the clerk and I, I like to try to do it in the middle of the day, don't wanna do it at five or six o'clock in the evening. So, um, so we'll try to do that about one o'clock on one of these days, if you can check your calendar? Uh, Clerk Roberts, and then we can kind of lock in on something. Okay? All right, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, Councilman Holcomb, can you please, uh, deliver the ordinances and resolutions report?
Uh, yes, ma'am, Mayor. Agenda item number one is the ordinance is up for the second reading. Two, three, four and five are all resolutions that will be completed on tonight. All of you should have in front of you a resolution amending the twenty twenty, twenty-five municipal budget to transfer funds from the building maintenance account to the parks and recrea- to the parks and recreation account to pay for the rental of a tent for the Juneteenth celebration? I move that this resolution be added to the agenda. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution number six be added to the agenda. Any discussion? With no discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Mays?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier? Councilmember Brunson?
Aye.
Councilmember Denton?
Aye.
Councilmember Fields?
Aye.
Next resolution to be added to the agenda? A resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Cato's Trucking, Asphalt and Pavement Incorporated and for related purposes? Uh, move that this res- resolution be added to the agenda. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, the res- resolution number seven be added to the agenda, any discussion?
Madam Mayor, I respectfully request that we pull this particular item. I think it deserves further study. I, I just don't wanna be in the business of, um, of appropriating a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars without it going through proper committee.
Well, the Councilmember Lockett, um, Chief Compton is back there, or, there he is. Um, he actually did put this out for a bid and all those bids came back way higher than this number.
Well, 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 why are we waiving competitive bid if they had the lowest bid?
Hell, I'll let him explain that.
Hell, I'll let him explain that.
My question is, if this was put out to bid, then why are we not going with the lowest bidder?
Uh, this was put out to bid. We only obtained one bid, and that bid ended up being $260,000, way outside our budget. So this, that's why I come to the council to try to ask for, to waive competitive bidding, because we did have a bid for $118,000.
We had a bid for 118?
For $118,000.
I don't understand.
He just, he didn't submit the bid in during the-
He didn't submit it, yes.
May I, may I count? The initial bid went out, and we received the one bid from Kato's Trucking at a hundred and some odd. Then the council asked that they would go back so that he would do a bid. He would do a, a bid, and so when the bid went forth, only one bidder submitted. And so the original bid did not get resubmitted. And so therefore, at that point, he comes with the competitive bid wave because the original one had come before the council prior to.
This bid was there before we set it out for a competitive bid?
Correct.
This bid was already there, but when that competitive bid came out, one other company submitted. This company did not. And so after that, we decided to go back with the original company that submitted the first bid, but, which wasn't part of a competitive bid process.
Quick question. Was there some kind of misunderstanding based on what you just said? That the initial bidder thought that theirs would be considered?
No, I didn't think that.
Okay, okay.
I just know that they had submitted a, a estimate from the company. Is that right?
That is correct.
Right, so the process, uh, Councilmember Lockett, that process has been done. Competitive bid has already been put out. One bidder came in. It was higher than, more than twice this. And so, um, luckily, uh, this company was still willing to honor this bid.
So basically, when we pulled it a while back, I remember, you, we pulled it, right?
That is correct.
To come back to this.
Correct.
I'm just glad you all came back, because you all had bagged away because of the bidding process. What was that?
Well, we, we came back and asked, once we was asked to put, put it out for bid, we received one bid. And it was, uh, open for 10 days or more, and one bid only came in, and like I said, it was $260,000, way outside of the scope for the infrastructure.
So we rebid it?
Well, that's why we're here tonight to ask for, to waive competitive bidding.
Make sure the, the citizens know what we're doing.
Yes, we asked them to waive competitive bidding.
So what we're faced with right now is either we're going to pay $260,000 to get the work done, or we're going to pay $118,000 to get the-
That is correct.
And we're going through this process. Is it a matter of timing so as to-
Uh, yes, we're looking at-
Go ahead and take advantage of this price and not prolong the work being done?
That is correct. Yes, ma'am.
That answers my question.
Councilman Lockett?
Yeah, I, I'm really having some problems with this, because we waived competitive bidding. Well, the-
This company did not submit during that, during that bid process. They did not submit a bid because they already had this bid sitting here. Now, once they put it out, one company bid, it was $260,000. Now, unless you want to pay $260,000 for it, then I think we should take the 118 that they, that they put here, and they're still willing to honor.
Actually, we should have kept this one at first.
But we did, and the council asked the fire department to do the competitive bidding process, which they did, and it generated a much higher, um, price. And the, I guess what I would say, Councilman, is we, I want to honor whatever concerns you have, and if you want to pull it, I'm not going to say anything. I just would say this, though, before you make a decision about how to approach this, because I understand that you may have some concerns that we're operating outside of the bidding process. But since we did bid, there was not the interest, and we have the benefit of an estimate that the company who submitted the original estimate before the council asked the fire department to engage the bidding process. If, if theirs is significantly less, and they're still willing to do the same work that another company, the only company that participated in the bidding process, would do for double the, over double the amount, I just would ask you to consider that.
Yes, ma'am, ma'am. I, I, the only thing that I gotta- The problem I'm having with this whole fire training building thing is the project management of it. Now, I, I can't go with this unless we have our pro- our Public Works Director supervising this, because what's happening is that the fire department is in the project management business, and that's not what y'all paid to do.
Can I, can I say this, Alderman Lockett? We do have the project manager on board. We met with him on Friday.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um. I've spoken with Mr. Matthews, um, and that's another reason I can't support this. I, I just can't. My, my conversation with him was he wasn't behind this particular, uh, resolution and didn't know why it was coming before us, so that's why, now. If we want to rebid it out and this particular bid, bid to put this number in, I don't have a problem with that, but we can't recruit people at a certain price and then go through the bidding price and then go back to the person that we recruited. I mean, I understand, Brother Brown, that it is 50% tr- uh, uh, cheaper, but what I'm saying, the process is just not the way I think we should be doing business as a city.
I mean, we was asked to put it out for bid, and we did put it out for bid, and we only received one bid. And we're scheduled, and we did go ahead and meet with Mr. Matthews. Matter of fact, Mr. Matthews will be talking back with us this week. We all met at the training center. We decided what we needed to do. And so that's where we at on this year.
Chief Compton, um, in light of, uh, Councilman's concerns, why don't we give it another couple of weeks to, um, for you to have that meeting with Mr. Matthews? We'll, um, meet the deadline to have it put on the agenda. Mr. Matthews can come to the meeting, um, in a couple of weeks, and we can do it that way. If we do that, would that hinder your ability to, um, get the training center built at the price that you are working with under, um, on budget?
As we know, the material is stuttering, rising in cost, so I'll have to get back with the contractor on that, but we can do that.
Are there, let me ask you this. Are, do you have access to any funds since I think we? I, um. Yeah, I think you have the funds to get the materials, so I'm wondering if you can go ahead and start getting the materials, and we can wade through this process, because it sounds like there's a communication gap between you and Mr. Matthews and Mr. Matthews and Councilman Lockett. And in light of his concerns, if we work that out, in the meantime, you can still get your supplies, since you have a project manager.
Yes, we can do that.
Can we do that? Okay, thank you so much.
Well, Madam Mayor, I was just going to say, um. I did have like some same concerns, um, before the meeting, when I just saw we were waiving competitive bidding. Oh, I'm sorry. So I did have the same concern about why we were waiving competitive business, bidding when I saw the resolution, but after the situation has been explained, I can't understand now why we are waiving the competitive bidding, bidding. So if we were to delay it for a few additional weeks, it sounds like the only two options would be to bring this resolution back as is or send it back out to competitive bidding.
Well, that's what I just said. We're going to bring it back as is in a couple of weeks, and that'll give time for Mr. Matthews, because it sounds like, um, Council-
Well, I guess what I'm just trying to say, would it just be better just to put it before the full council, and let's just go ahead and vote on it, because I would hate-
Talk about today?
Yeah, because I would just hate to delay that.
Because anything we add to the agenda has to be voted on unanimously to add to the agenda.
Okay.
That's the only reason I was moving forward.
I, I don't really see what, another, I don't see us coming up with another outcome.
And I don't even, I mean, he had nothing.
I don't really see what, what, what else would we be looking for? A higher bid?
Yeah, but my issue is if the low bid met with the fire department and came up with a bid, then they put it out to bid, and the lowest bidder failed to bid, then we waived competitive bidding to entertain the initial amount for the low bidder. So my issue is, why didn't the company bid the first?
Councilmember Lockett, we kind of answered that question for you, because we're not the company. But what we have in front of us is a bid for $118,000 and another bid for $260,000. So what other outcome are you looking for?
Well, I'm not trying to spend any more money, but I'm still-
That's what it seems like you're trying to do, because if we delay it, the price could go up. It's not going to go down.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to do things right on this council. That's all I can say. I can't go to bid at night with this. I'm saying is, if we want to do this right, we'll put it back out to bid, let the lowest bidder bid again. But what I'm saying is, if the man wanted the job, why did he not bid on it?
I can't answer that question.
Well, I can, because what I'm saying is, it's not going to be entertained until he does bid on it. We're not going to private people and soliciting numbers and telling them to do business with the city of Pine Bluff. We're going to bid things out, and if you want to do business, solicit a bid.
Well, everything is not bid out, and, and we do have a process, um, that the full body can make a decision about as to whether or not it makes sense to waive the bid. And I think that we should respect your concern. Your, we, in order for us to move forward, it requires a unanimous vote. You have concerns, so we can move on.
Yes, sir.
And if we, you know, I, I already said what we can do, so. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Chief.
So, agenda item number seven would not be added to the agenda. Next agenda item is a resolution waiving competitive se- Go ahead. Next agenda item, a resolution waiving competitive selection and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Solid Waste Specialist SWSLLC.
Thank you. Uh, may I make a few comments?
Yes, ma'am.
So, um. As you all know, we are, um, in a contract currently with Waste Management, and that contract comes up for renewal, um, on November 1. And, um, rather than go through the exact same process we did last time, um, also rather than extending the current contract, which was a conversation that I had with Waste Management, we had an opportunity and actually had a meeting, Chief Campbell and myself, um, with the current company that we are looking to, um, consider. And rather than me try to explain everything, the main point I want to make about this is that, uh, with this contract, they, they would basically operate as a procurement director in this process. And, um, one of the owners in this company actually worked for, uh, previously worked for Waste Management and was a part of our previous process. So he's very well aware of, you know, what we have now, of, um, the dynamics in these contracts, and has done this work for, uh, other cities in and out of Arkansas. And what I would ask is, if we could briefly entertain him, there's a PowerPoint presentation that was handed out to you. Um, but if we could briefly entertain him, um, to present what this would mean for us as we engage this process to meet the deadline, but also to ensure that the city of Pine Bluff, um, enters into the best contract that protects our people and protects the city while, um, getting the best deal for our people. And the, finally, the main thing that I would, um, ask you to consider is, the way that this works is for the $42,660 that would be spent on these services, the winning bidder would come back and reimburse the city for those dollars. So the way this works is basically whoever wins this extremely lucrative bid to provide these services and bill our citizens would be the ones to pay for this, um, process. Um, I believe that the-
Is anybody here to speak on that?
Yes.
Oh, we, we doing that now? We have to add it to the agenda?
We can add it to the agenda, and he can speak later, but I just wanted to bring to your attention so that as you make a decision to put it on the agenda, that you kind of know that someone is here to speak, that we have the PowerPoint, and that this ultimately would be a net zero expense for the city.
Shouldn't this be a meeting, a business meeting?
Hmm?
Versus, um, you didn't hear anybody here want to hear this? They might.
Absolutely. They're the ones that are going to pay for the waste services.
Well, I mean, I mean, I mean, they can, I just got this.
Well, let me say this too.
You know, really?
Let me say this, um, our contract ends, and I believe it's at, it's in October. Um, so I was, I always say November, but it's October 31st. We don't have a lot of time. Um, you know, we're running short on time, and so it would be best for us to try to get somebody in place so we can, um, get a better contract from whatever company we're going with. So I would say let's, this is something that we should not wade around and kick can down the road on. Let's try to get this going. It's not going to cost the city any money. And the costs is upfront, but we'll get reimbursed. I, I just don't really, I don't know. I just think we should just go ahead and add this to the agenda so we can get it passed today.
And I, and I, I would ask you to add it to the agenda and at least hear all of the information and ask your questions, you know, toward making a decision for the city. Yes.
Madam Mayor, so are we saying we going to vote on this tonight?
I'm, I'm asking that, yes. But what I'm asking is right now, we put it on the agenda so that you can hear the information. And I think when you hear the information, um, I think that everyone on this council will be, um, comfortable. But in order for you to hear it, you got to hear it.
Do you want to hear the information before we add it to the agenda?
That would be my thing. Here's the problem I'm having, Madam Mayor, now. I'm really getting frustrated that we're adding very heavy and very-
Lucrative.
Yeah, well, Steve said lucrative, but, but these are big issues now. What I'm saying is that, that, that the Waste Management contractors in the millions of dollars, and whoever selects them has that, has that responsibility.
Let me be clear. We're not talking about selecting a company to provide the waste services.
Well, I understand.
Okay.
I understand, but I'm saying-
So the lucrative contract that is, where you're talking about millions of dollars is involved, is a contract that I think we have, we've had several meetings with Waste Management, and they have been doing better, but we also know and have heard from our constituents, before I was sworn in, I was coming to meetings, and commercial and residential, um, customers were having some very serious problems, and people were coming to this council, meeting after meeting, and we, I'm going to say the council's hands were tied because we were in a contract that did not allow for us to do anything except make a phone call and beg them to do something in a timely manner. And we were on Waste Management's time, and they had their issues. They are good people. We've met with them, but they had their issues, and they are a private company. And I think that, you know, short of examining the contract we have now in order to engage a process to ensure the strongest possible contract to benefit our constituents, we need the assistance of people who are in this industry, who know what these contract terms mean, and who can help us wade through the process so we can make informed decisions. We will still have a, uh, committee. We will still have a selection committee. Um, one of whom, uh, members, one of those members will be from this council. one of whom members, one of those members will be from this council, as well as our city attorney, as well as my chief of staff. So we will be making our own decisions. We will be engaging companies who want to do business with us and want to compete for this contract. What I'm asking for us to do is consider a company that doesn't, that has a level of expertise and understanding of Pine Bluff and understanding of our contract that I don't think any other company has. And I think if you will put it on the agenda and hear from George as he brings information about the PowerPoint, you will understand that. If you don't agree, you can vote against it. But I just would ask that, given that we have a very short window of time, and without this assistance, even with another month, even with another two months, we could not do this the way that these experts could help us do it.
But, you know, I'll say this, this is my first time seeing this. Y'all can't, you're talking about trash. We're talking about trash now.
Right.
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 We want to make sure everything is good, because see, they don't call y'all, y'all people, you trash.
They do call us, and we call them, like, yes, they do.
Yeah, I'm just saying, no.
We work together on this.
We need to have another meeting. This is my first.
We will have another meeting.
Y'all trying to circumvent everything.
Nobody's trying to circumvent anything. Everything we're doing is above board. And as I mentioned, our city attorney, a member of the council, and other members in city government will be on this selection committee. We need some assistance, and I just ask that you hear out the proposal. And you can vote against it if you disagree.
Well, I'm saying, we didn't, I didn't hear about this till today.
Right, that's why we have city council meetings. Remember, I work on the day-to-day, and I bring you all proposals, information, and updates.
People don't understand what's being said.
Councilmen, councilmen, we're not going to argue here like this. Let's move forward.
I work for the citizens.
And so do I, and so do I. We do together. And I just ask for you to hear this out, yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
So, yeah, I did, I've already expressed, you know, would like to be able to do our homework. But I do see since Mr. Wheatley is here, regardless of however we vote tonight, I think it would be prudent, since he's already here, for us just to give him some time, whether it's on the agenda or after the agenda, to at least hear his presentation, since he's already here.
Honestly, I'd ask to go ahead and hear it now, since we're in this position.
Can we hear it and it not be on the agenda?
We can, we can vote.
We, well, you just talked about a process.
Y'all discussing something, the discussion should only be about putting it on the agenda, not-
No, that's not true.
The discussion should be about putting it on the agenda, not discussing the actual legislation.
So we would have to hear it after the meeting if it's a non-agenda item. So either we put it on the agenda and we hear it, or we don't.
So where are we in the motion?
There's no motion yet.
Do we have a motion to add? Motion to add? Well, I hate it.
Madam Mayor, I respect the request that if we could put it on after the meeting, and if we have to call a special meeting latter part of the week to approve it, I feel more comfortable. But this is way too much information to digest in one setting at a city council meeting. And I feel like I got a gun to me here, because what I'm saying is, it's so last minute, and it's so important to the city of Pine Bluff, that I just, this is really what committees are for. We are entertaining too much information at the last minute without any prior knowledge of what's going in the resolutions. And here's how, it feels like, I know you do the day-to-day, but somehow we got to-
I'll just remind you of this, and I'm going to respect whatever you all say. I have attended meetings, I have watched meetings, where decisions have been made around millions of dollars and projects where there was no resolution, and y'all made them. I watched it. And why it's different now, when we know that this process is such that, it's a long process. We're still talking about what would happen between now and October, and whether it's a process that I engage myself without having the expertise, or whether we bring in experts at a pretty reasonable cost, considering the level of expertise and what would be involved in engaging these companies to come before us and to negotiate a better contract than what we have now. It just seems to me that we could work together on that. And I'm not asking you to wade through a whole bunch of information. The PowerPoint gives very clear information, and everyone who serves on this council is intelligent, can read, can ask questions. I'm not trying to do that. I'm not trying to put anything past anyone. But the time is of essence. There are a lot of things, yes, sir, yes, sir, I'll stop. You said, you had your finger up.
Oh, I was respectfully waiting till you got through.
Okay.
But I move that we add this agenda to the, this agenda, item to the agenda, and that we listen to the PowerPoint.
Second.
Discussion, it's been moved and seconded, discussion.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you.
I do understand what Mr. Lockett is saying, so just to make it more comfortable for all the council members, if we do add, go ahead and add it to the agenda tonight, and we hear the presentation, will we still be able, if like Mr. Lockett needs once more time, or any of the other council members, to just table it to the next meeting, but at least we add it to tonight's agenda and discuss it?
He will, he, absolutely. I mean, he's a voting member. He can make that motion.
Well, well, let me say this, let me say this, and seniority. I'm just now finding out about all this tonight. Citizens really don't know what goes on behind closed doors up here. And y'all can't just make, put stuff out there like that, keep talking millions of dollars for our citizens. I don't have no problem with what's going on, but we got to respect our citizens. They vote for us.
And councilmen, let me say this.
Let me finish, ma'am.
They are here, though. They are here to listen to this.
These not all of our citizens.
Well-
A lot of people in the fourth floor-
All of our citizens don't come every-
And they listen to us. And they'll call me, and they'll say, what was that?
And then you tell them.
I'm not going to lie to them people. Y'all didn't ever give me the full scope on this stuff.
Okay, okay, okay.
You know what I'm saying? I'm not going to vote on something that I don't have enough information about, really. Come on now.
And councilmen, you don't have to, but we're not going to do this. Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Mr. Wheatley, he's idea. I mean, you're going to do a presentation-
Councilmen, councilmen, I'm trying to conduct the meeting, and we've had discussion. And now we're going to call the vote.
You calling the vote?
Not for the, no, just to put it on the agenda. The motion's been made and seconded, just to put it on the agenda, and we will hear the full issue.
All these backdoor meetings.
Councilmen, be respectful, really. I don't do that to you. Please be respectful. Nobody's having a backdoor meeting. We are in open city council meeting, okay? Okay, thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. And without any further discussion, all those who are interested in voting in the roll call, Madam Clerk, you may now begin the roll call.
Now, hold on, hold on, Madam Clerk. What are we voting on?
To put this on the agenda so you can hear it later on in this meeting.
Madam Mayor, if I could clarify for Mr. Mays. I understand what you're saying about wanting our citizens to be able to investigate this. I think if we put it on the agenda tonight, give him an opportunity to give his presentation, and then we can decide as a council whether or not we want to vote tonight or postpone it to the next meeting, I think that would be a fair compromise. Because we'll go ahead and get the presentation now, and that'll give us time to think about it.
I understand, but you're talking about Waste Management. You're talking about trash. Picking up trash all over Pine Bluff. You know what I'm saying? We're talking about trash for our people. Now, they don't call some, they call y'all too. But I'm just saying, we got to make the right decision for our citizens. This ain't even, this not even a fourth in here. The rest of them online, me listening.
Well, Captain Mays, I'll just say that, you know, the last time we went through this process, we did not have a consultant. We kind of formed a committee within the city, and we came up with a contract with Waste Management. And I'm not saying it was a horrible contract, but it wasn't the best it could be.
I understand.
And so now we have an opportunity to have someone who has, who's pretty much an expert in doing contracts, and they're going to help us establish a better contract with whomever we decide to go with.
I'm just saying, if President Mayor's just trying to circumvent, go around me to make this happen. I'm just saying, we got to be honest with our citizens.
Councilmen, we're not going around you.
No, no, because some of y'all think you do.
No, we're not.
I just let it go.
But councilmen, let's just move forward, please, to be respectful for people's time who are here, okay? And be respectful to Mr. Wheatley, who is here, okay? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Mays?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
No.
Council-
Sorry, Mr. Wheatley. What I will do is-
You can present after?
Present, yes, if we can present as a non-agenda item afterward, and then we'll figure out how to move forward from there. Thank you so much. Yes, he's going to do the presentation during the non-agenda items.
A resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing agreement with Forbes LLP for auditing services. I move that this resolution be added to the agenda.
Second.
I'm sorry, it's been moved and seconded, that-
It's number nine.
Item number nine be added to the agenda. Any discussion?
Yes. Could somebody explain this? Auditing services?
Let me clarify this. This is the same company going through an ownership change that is in the process of doing auditing our federal programs. It's the same company. I believe they changed names how long ago? They changed names last year, now they're changing names again? So we're making the change based on the change from last year?
Can Gina explain this? I mean, that's only right to the citizens. I don't know.
This company bought BKB.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
This company bought BKB, but it's the same company that is right now in the process of doing our federal, our audit for our federal programs. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Devers.
It is BKB. We were behind in our federal audits. I think I explained a couple of months ago, everybody got behind during COVID. So we're in the process of catching up. And we did the same resolution to enter into the 2022 audit year. That one is close to completion, and so they're getting ready to start 2023. And so we have to have another engagement letter for them to start that year.
Oh, that sound good, Gina. What's the cost?
Well, we don't know. They bill us based on the number of hours they spend on the audit. And that depends on the number of federal programs. And I can tell you, we did not have nearly as many in '23 as we had in '22.
So what do we pay for them?
Well, they're not done yet, but we've paid about $15,000 so far.
Quick question. Based on where we are now, this waiver, especially, and I'll just remind the council that we're still in the process of getting 2022 completed. And before 2022 is completed, or once '22 is completed, we still have to get '23 completed. By when?
June 30th.
And what's today?
The 16th.
Okay, so, and this company that's reflected in this waiver because of the change is who we're saying we want to continue doing the work that they're already doing. Am I correct?
Yes, they will just transition straight into the next one so that we can meet the deadline.
So we'd still be able to get it done before the end of the month?
We're doing everything we possibly can to get it done. They have assured us that they are doing everything they can to get it done.
But we've been calling, emailing very regularly. I think you took, made a visit up there, and we're planning to make another one before the 30th. So we're doing everything we can, but we're in this situation where they have, for a long time, done our federal audits. They had all the information, have had it for a long time. So it's really not even an option to pull it and rebid this, given the timeline. And that's why, this is another example of why we're having to put some of these things before you all. We didn't have anything to do with this name change. And we are still waiting for the audits to be completed so we can be in compliance. And so it's just not prudent. It would be really a-
You'd be hitting the reset button.
It would, but it would be harmful to the city if we did not do this and do it now.
And we do plan to bid out again before we do the '24 audit. We've just got to get over this hurdle, and then we will hit that reset button.
So we missed, what, two years, a year?
No, not we, they. We didn't, we haven't missed anything. We're just behind.
How many years? Days, months?
Well, the deadline is the end of this month, and so they're trying to-
Right, it was, the '23 audit would have been due in September of '24. Was the original deadline. And then there have been extensions because we're not the only ones behind. And the latest one is June 30th.
With a bright head of what estimate?
It depends on how many hours they spend on it.
But what you need to know is this, no, it's not, it's not a blank check. What you need to know is that this does not impact upon what we have to pay. We are already in an agreement with them. This is, this is, has more to do with the construct of their company and the name of their company. We are already in an agreement. They are already working on our '22 and '23 audits. So we are getting in compliance based upon the name of the company and that transition that began last year. So when you ask about cost, no one's trying to evade. We don't get invoiced until they complete the audit, and the cost of the audit is based upon how many hours they spend doing the audit. So that's why we can't give you a number.
I'm saying, so basically, you're giving them a blank check?
No, no. The check that they get is based upon their contract that is already in process. So no, there's no blank check. Any further discussion? Okay, with that, did we, did we get, yeah, we got a motion?
Motion in a second.
Motion in a second, no further discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mays?
No.
Councilmember Mays?
No.
It dies there.
It dies.
That concludes all this.
Mr. Sheriff, Madam Mayor, so since that did not move forward, how does that affect the auditing services? What are our next?
Well, I don't think that anybody cares about that now who would vote against it. So, I mean, I think we explained the payment. We explained why this is being done. We explained the implications. We explained that we're waiting on this very company that we need to pay to conduct the audit, to complete it by the deadline. to complete it by the deadline. And I'm, I've done my due diligence, so we gonna move on. Okay. I believe, are you, are you finished?
That concludes ordinance resolution.
Okay, thank you so much. Councilwoman Frazier is not with us this evening. Um, Councilmember Denton, will you please, um, make the public health and welfare report?
Good evening, Mayor. Um, Public Health and Welfare, we met on June the fifth. And, um, Ms. Shaw said that they're using two new radios, they're getting ready, rid of the Motorola. And Mr. Blunt from the cemetery said that they had nine barrels conducted, they sold eight graves. And the, the maintenance, two dead trees have been removed, eleven additional trees are scheduled for removal. And they're being funded by a grant secured with the assistance of our grant writer, Ms. Copeland. And also a meeting was scheduled for today on the sixteenth at one with Ms. Rebecca Morris to discuss implementing the cemetery management and the software that would enhance operational efficiency. And also the entrance of the se, the cemetery has been upgraded for a more modern and welcoming appearance. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Lockett, will you please deliver your public works report?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, the Public Works Committee has not met since our last meeting, but, uh, we shall meet on Tuesday, a week from tomorrow. Um, get the date for that. So the twenty-fourth at one o'clock in the old City Council chambers in via Zoom. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Lockett.
What was the time?
One o'clock.
Councilmember Fels, will you please deliver the development and planning report?
Um, yes, Madam Mayor. So the Development and Planning Committee, we met on June the eleventh. And we discussed agenda items three, I mean, two, three, and four. And we forwarded them all to the council with due past recommendations. And we will be meeting again and we'll be sharing that with the public and the clerk's office in the coming days. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Brunson, will you please deliver the traffic and aviation report?
Traffic and aviation has not met and I will get with the clerk on a day that we can meet, um, before our next council meeting. That ends my report. Thanks, Mayor. Is that me?
Thank you, Councilmember Brunson. Councilmember Holcomb, will you please deliver the administration report?
Uh, yes, Mayor. Administration Committee will meet this Wednesday, June the eighteenth at four P M. That'll be in person and in Zoom. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember. And Councilmember Brown, will you please deliver the public safety report?
Yes, Mayor. Public Safety, uh, met on June the eleventh. Um, we heard from the, um, first we heard from the Police Department. We talked about getting some new cars. Right now, currently, we have a, a, um, contract with Enterprise. We have forty units. Uh, we're looking to get twenty more before the end of the year. Uh, and they're gonna be working, uh, on doing that. We had some representatives from Enterprise there and they gave us a handout about, um, the cost of the vehicles. And so the, um, between the Police Department and Enterprise, they're gonna come up with, um, how we can get those vehicles in. Cause we have a, uh, basically have more officers coming in. We have officers that are in different, uh, parts of training, whether they're in the academy or going through their field training. And so, um, to make sure that we have vehicles for all those officers, we're looking to get those vehicles. Uh, Chief Warrior also, um, gave a report on the crime. It's down thirteen percent overall. And, um, also she said that there is a PFAC, PFAC meeting, which is Police, Fire, Animal Control and Code Enforcement. And so that's a group that they have, uh, put together to answer concerns from the citizens. What I did not get, it's on June twenty-fourth and it, and it's at six o'clock. What is the location? Oh, it's, okay, so it's in this building. So it'll be here, um, six o'clock, June twenty-fourth. And that is the PFAC, that's Police, Fire, Animal Control and Code Enforcement. So if anyone has any questions about any of those departments, we'll have representatives there from all of those, uh, different departments and they'll be able to answer questions and concerns from the citizens. And so that's the purpose of forming that group. We have, um, four currently in the process of testing in the Police Department and we have twenty applications for part-time officers at this time. From Animal Control, they had a, um, rescue organization that come by, which is called Last Hope. They came over and they offered, uh, spaying and neutering for animals, um, also shots. And, um, also, um, actually, Mr. Pittman gave, gave, gave this report. He said that, uh, we're in need of eight traps. We've had more traps in the past, but, um, as we put traps out in the community, um, they have, um, mysteriously disappeared. So, so we'll need to order some more traps, um, approximately eight of those. That cost is about thirty-two hundred dollars. I'm talking to the Finance Director to see if we can find thirty-two hundred dollars so we can order the traps. Okay, all right, moving along. We had an adoption event at the Animal Control Center on June seventh. We had two animals that were adopted then. Um, he also reported that we had funding in place currently already for our generator and also for the kennels. Uh, we have our new facility, our newer facility, which is already fully, um, all the kennels are there, but we're starting to use our older facility and we're gonna put new kennels in that building. Uh, they've been doing some, some work in that building to make sure that we can also house animals there cause we've had such an increase in the amount of animals that we house. And so in the last thirty days, just to kind of give you an idea of what, what Animal Control is doing, um, over the last thirty days, we've had a hundred and sixty animals to come through the Animal Control Center, a hundred and seventeen dogs and forty-three cats. And we had thirteen adopted cats and twelve dogs that were adopted over the last month. Um, we had five dogs that were given back to the owners. And the reason why that happened is because of the microchipping that we're starting to do with the pets. So as they bring them in, if they've already been through the center, they already have a microchip. And so we'll be able to identify where that animal has come from. Okay. Uh, from the Fire Department, um, had, we heard from Chief Compton. Um, we've, uh, we had a fire death, uh, recently that is still under investigation. Uh, we had three fire deaths total this year, one in January, one in March, and then one in June. Um, we have five new candidates in the Fire Department. It should start in July. They'll go through EMS training and then, um, go to the academy hopefully in January. And we, um, we talked about the, the abid process for the infrastructure, which we just had earlier. But, um, that did not make it to the agenda. And plans are to tear down the old training center to make way for the, um, infrastructure work and the new training facility that we're going to, uh, build at the, uh, at the training center in that same location. The contract's been sent back to Lone Star, who was responsible for, um, for providing the structure for the, uh, training facility, for the burn building or the training facility. And hopefully June, I'm sorry, first quarter of January, first quarter of twenty-six, which roughly January, February for putting that facility in. So hopefully by then we'll have a structure there for people to see. Um, also, uh, match casualty exercise was held at Jack Robey School on June the tenth. Um, we had, uh, Captain Carruthers, Lieutenant, uh, Kiesler and Lieutenant Dukes, who were responsible for putting that exercise on. And also he reported that we're updating, um, furniture at three fire stations right now. Okay. And that is all I have. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much. And now we will go into the proposed ordinances and resolutions with, uh, Chair, Chairman Holcomb.
Yes, ma'am, Mayor. Item number one, a ordinance providing for the rezoning of certain territory in the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Fifty-nine hundred blocks of Dollarway Road and two thousand block of Lane Street up for the second reading.
An ordinance providing for the rezoning of certain territory in the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, the fifty-nine hundred block of Dollarway Road and two thousand block of Lane Street.
Place it on the calendar. Item number two, a resolution authorizing the purchase of GMC Sierra Crew Cab Pickup Truck from Smart Chevrolet Buick Incorporated.
Whereas the Inspection Department needs a new truck to assist in, uh, carrying out its responsibilities. And whereas the department identified a twenty-twenty-five GMC Sierra Crew Cab Pickup Truck on sale by Smart Chevrolet Buick Incorporated in Whitehall, Arkansas. And whereas the truck was obtainable for a price slightly less than the price fixed by the Office of State Procurement under state contract for a vehicle of the comparable make and model vehicle with the smart truck, including additional options. And whereas ACA section fourteen fifty-eight, one zero four, uh, seventeen and section two dash one fifty-six, sixteen of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine, City of Pine Bluff authorized the purchase without the requirement of competitive bidding of a new motor vehicle from a dealer when the price of the vehicle does not exceed the fleet price of the comparable veh, vehicle available through the state contract. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the Inspection Department is authorized to purchase the twenty-twenty-five GMC Sierra Crew Cab Truck, Pickup Truck from Smart Chevrolet Buick Incorporated of Whitehall, Arkansas for the purchase price of thirty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars, which is appropriated in the department's budget for twenty-twenty-five. The mayor and the department director may execute the necessary documents to complete the purchase.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This resolution number two be adopted. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those voting for approval indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's adopted.
Item number three, a resolution declaring certain houses, buildings and/or structures as nuisance and ordering their abatement.
Whereas the City Council has determined that the structures.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution number three be adopted. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those voting for approval of resolution number three indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item number four, a resolution providing for placement of costs of correcting certain nuisance on tax book at delinquent taxes and collected as such.
Whereas ACA fourteen fifty-four nine zero three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution number four be adopted. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those, but. Councilmember Mays?
Thank you, Mayor. These, uh, balances on these. The liquid taxes, it's kind of high. I looked at all those. You got nine thousand, five thousand, nine thousand. I mean.
Give me your price, please.
Sure. Sorry about that. I don't usually do it like that. Sorry about that. Can you hear me now, Ray?
Thank you, man. Fuck for saying that. Just trying to help somebody along the way. These, can anybody explain why come these are so high?
Councilmember, aren't you a sponsor on this?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but I still have a question on it though. They were still, they were very high. Can, can anybody?
Somebody from Code Enforcement? You know, looking at the numbers, Councilmember Mays, these are demos.
That, that Mr., that Mr. Lockett.
Oh, there we go, okay.
Yeah, yeah, really.
These are demos.
I mean, these. Why, why are they so high, Pastor Lockett? I think we.
The cost of dumping has tremendously went up. And when they bid them out, we take the lowest bid. Fortunately, that's what it costs to do that particular home that's already gone. Because we can't control prices.
Any further discussion? Thank you. With no further discussion, all of those voting to adopt resolution number four indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's adopted. Or resolution's adopted.
Item number five, a resolution appointing Christopher Givens to the Pine Bluff Jefferson County Library Board of Trustees.
Whereas a vacancy exists in one of the city's positions on the Pine Bluff Jefferson County Library Board of Trustees. And whereas the mayor has elected to appoint Christopher Givens to fill the vacancy subject to council confirmation. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the mayor's appointment of Christopher Givens to the Pine Bluff Jefferson County Library Board of Trustees to serve a term to expire June first, twenty-thirty is confirmed.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution number five be adopted. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those voting for resolution number five to be, to be adopted indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution's adopted.
Item number six, a resolution amending the twenty-twenty-five municipal budget to transfer funds from the building maintenance account to the park and recreation account to pay for the rental of a tent for the Juneteenth celebration.
Whereas pursuant to ordinance number sixty-eight forty-nine, a change or adjustment to the municipal budget requires the action to be memorialized by our res, ordinance or resolution depending upon which form was used to approve the budget. And whereas the twenty-twenty-five municipal budget was adopted by resolution number forty-eight forty-nine. And whereas it is necessary to make an adjustment and change the budget as described in the detailed attachment to pay for the rental of a tent for use in this year's Juneteenth celebration. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, that the adjustment to the twenty-twenty-five municipal budget set out in the attachment is approved. The particulars thereof, as detailed in the attachment, are incorporated herein as if fully set forth word for word and number for number. Section two, that the twenty-twenty-five municipal budget adopted by resolution number forty-eight forty-nine is amended to incorporate the adjustments and changes set out in the attachment. Section three, the Finance Department will ensure that the budget is implemented as amended.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution number six be adopted. Any discussion? No discussion, all those voting for the adoption of resolution number six indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution, resolution number six has been adopted.
That concludes all the item, Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. I didn't have one of them back. Thank you. And now I will read the announcements. The serial drive for the City of Pine Bluff deadline is June eighteenth. The drop-off location is at the Civic Center, two hundred East Eighth Avenue. We will have a box located on the first floor for your donations. For more information, please contact Chairperson Vicki Conaway at eight seven oh seven three zero twenty forty or Co-Chair Tiffany Copeland at eight seven zero seven three zero twenty-one seventy-nine. Number two, item number two, the first day of summer movie on the lawn, Bring Your Lawn Chairs, Popcorn and Lemonade, will be served Wednesday, June eighteenth at eight P M, showing the Sandlot. So come out and enjoy our summer movie night as we celebrate the first day of summer with fun, friends and film, Under the Stars, at six hundred South Main Street, Pine Bluff, seven one six oh one. Item number three, Sippin' Soul, a Juneteenth Celebration at Indigo Blue Coffee House on Thursday, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. There will be an art exhibit, ten A M. to four P M. and an open mic from four P M. to seven P M. This program benefits the Pine Bluff NAACP Actso Program. Indigo Blue Coffee House is located at twenty, two twelve West Barracuda Street in Pine Bluff. And the phone number is eight seven oh seven one eight five three three zero. And the final, uh, note on the, um, announcements tonight is UAPB's Juneteenth. In the Bluff, it's actually UAPB and City of Little Rock, Juneteenth in the Bluff Arts and Cultural Festival is free to the public. Friday, June twentieth, twenty twenty-five, from five to eleven P M. There will be live music, Kid Zone, vendors, food trucks, culinary, food demonstrations and li, a line dancing challenge. It'll be held downtown Pine Bluff at Third and Main Streets in Pine Bluff. And one item that Councilwoman Brunson wanted to share, she is attending a training tomorrow. And there are still some scholarships available for council members. And it's, um, a framework for civility. And what I'll do is share this link, um, with all of the council members and I will also. And what I'll do is share this link with all of the council members, and I will also share it with the clerk and share it online so that residents and the press will have access to it. And now we will adjourn and hear the public comments, non-agenda items.
Recording stopped. I thought we still record. Non-agenda, we don't?
Before we hear the proposal regarding the solid waste disposal contract, we will hear from Mr. Kevin Harris regarding recognition for Arbor Day and Tree City USA.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kevin Harris. I'm the County Extension Agent and Staff Chair for Urban Storm and Water in the Jefferson County Extension Service here. This evening, we want to present you with some tokens on your recognition for participating in the Arbor Day Foundation Tree City USA program for 12 consecutive years. And so that is something that we wanted to recognize you with tonight. But before that, I was gonna have, we have a young man here that's gonna introduce himself. He is our intern for this summer, so I'm gonna have him introduce himself.
Good evening. My name is Darius Gaines. I am a senior at the, at UAPB. My major is Religatory Science Agriculture, and I am the new intern at Jefferson County Extension Office.
Congratulations.
And I'll just say that Darius is, this is his third week, and we've been really busy with him. You'll see him out and about with us, and he is actually the first intern we've had since COVID.
Thank you.
Again, my name's Brian Cockrell with the Department of Agriculture. Again, I will say thank you to the City Council into involvement with Arbor Day. On behalf of Arbor Day Foundation, I'd like to present you all with your 12-year placard going on your street signs and your medallion. I do have other, you have your new banner and other stickers included.
Thank you so much.
And Mayor Flowers, we'd like to get some pictures before we leave this evening, if possible. Thank you for all your support.
Let's go on and do it now.
Okay. All right. You got it, Mayor. Do you have a band?
Three, two. Magic.
Oh wait, did you get it?
Yeah, I got it.
Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Wiggly, thank you for your patience and coming all this way to provide us this information. And I think I mentioned to the council members that the PowerPoint was disseminated. I don't see my copy, but that's okay. You all have a copy right here, yeah. So please do go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Mayor, members of City Council. Wow, what an evening. All right. Let's see. Let me, let me go to Slide One here, and that's showing up. Good. And the company I now represent is owned by three of us. We're a professional consulting firm that provides assistance through the states of Texas, Oklahoma, and Arkansas. We provide this assistance to municipalities for preparation of requests for proposals for solid waste services. Our members are Lynn Lantrop, who served municipal communities for the nation's largest collection firm for 40 years. Richard Roser, longtime mayor of DeSota, Texas, now serves as tax collector for Ellis County. And then myself, I was longtime mayor in Magnolia, Arkansas, and served municipal communities, including Pine Bluff, for the nation's largest collection firm for 30 years. By the way, I retired in April of 2022. What we have, we have proposed to the city is helping develop the specifications to put your solid waste services out for proposal. On the other hand, in my previous life, I would have been against this. I was that guy who was wanting you to renew your contract. But I've also heard for the past more than 12 months, there were tremendous issues. And so I contacted the mayor, Chief Campbell, and said, would you consider putting your service out for proposal? And the mayor said, yes, we would. Right now, your current service that you have with waste management expires October 31st, 2025. Residential solid waste is collected once a week with a 96-gallon cart. Residents can also get two carts, and they get three bags with that paying for the second cart. Brush and bulk service, the resident must call in the day before their collection day for pickup of bulky waste and brush. Commercial service is included in this total franchise, as is industrial, or what we call roll-off, waste. The key dates, and what we're looking at is trying to get proposals out, get qualified vendors to propose to do the work here in the City of Pine Bluff, but at the same time, give them time to order all of the equipment that will be required, even if it's the incumbent. Because even if it's the incumbent, the specifications are gonna call for brand-new carts for each home, brand-new commercial containers for each business, brand-new roll-off containers for each company that's using roll-off work, and then trucks that cannot be over four years old. And this, this takes a little bit of time, so we're trying to do that and have, have the successful proposer be in, be ready to do business in Pine Bluff by the 1st of June the 20th, we've had meetings so far, and we will continue to have meetings with, with city staff, and that gathers information on how you want the next proposal to look. And the best way I can say that is, let me give you an example of, of dead animals. It's in your current contract, but now the city is being charged a huge amount to, to dispose, have those dead animals disposed of. And that's just one small part of it, but it's how you can improve your existing contract. July the 11th, have that, have that RFP and, and contract, and they're all in one document. Give the city attorney time to do a legal review. Then on 17th of July, publish the RFP. August the 11th, accept proposals from, we hope will be five, six, or more companies that would be interested in this, doing the work in the City of Pine Bluff. And then on September the 1st, award a new contract by the City Council. Now what we do, and the mayor mentioned this, there will be seven members in the City of Pine Bluff who will be judges for the presentations that are submitted. They will narrow it down to two or three, then there will be interviews of those two or three, then it will be narrowed down by this group of judges to one company that will come before the City Council. Nobody is selected until the City Council votes on that company. And then November the 3rd, which is the first workday in the month of November, the, the new service starts. When, when companies submit a book that's part of their RFP, 65% of their score is based on the book itself. My company, SWS, does not even read the book. That's, that's not, that's because, that's what the judges do, that, that are with the City of Pine Bluff. What are they, what are they looking at? Experience providing like services in a like-size city, size of Pine Bluff. Financial strength of proposer, and the first, first score is, is up to 7%, next score up to 5%. Strength of proposal at, of personnel at the hauling division, and that means the company that is going to be servicing the City of Pine Bluff. Operational plan in a narrative format, where they, they put in the book in a narrative form exactly how they're going to service this entire franchise, whether it be residential, commercial, roll-off, or industrial work. Safety performance, we call it TRIR and DART. We don't call it that. That's the federal government's safety scores that each company who, who proposes to the City of Pine Bluff has to submit these safety scores to the federal government. And you want your score, your best score is zero, no one has a zero, but if you've got a, if you've got a three companies, four companies, five companies, and one of them has a safety score that is just way high compared to the others, they're not gonna score very well in this particular category. Transition plan, you notice that's 15%. How do you move from the current way you're doing business in Pine Bluff to the new way that is, that's gonna take place in the month of November? Yes.
Pardon?
Councilman, we're-
No, no, I got a question.
Well, hold on. I'm running the meeting, and I'm, we're gonna let him finish, and then I'm gonna engage questions. Councilman? Councilman?
I'm sorry. I'm on Slide Five.
Go ahead, please, continue.
Okay. RFP judging metrics, councilman.
They're not known, that's why I asked.
Oh, I'm sorry. The number of, of the criteria?
The number of page you're on.
Number, well, it's Page Five.
Yeah, we got it, we got it.
Okay. Then the, the next item after the transition plan is emergency and storm management plan. Pine Bluff has had its share of disasters, mainly natural disasters, and each, each company who submits a proposal will write out how they're going to handle natural disasters or any type of disaster. It could be an explosion, it could be a major fire, but it could also be a tornado or an ice storm. Customer service, I think this is very important. It gets 10%. They, they say how, they have to say in their submittal how they're going to report that, and then the use of global positioning systems, which will be required by all companies on, on how they say they've collected this or they've missed that. Compliance, clarity of proposal. We're not looking for companies to be, to be beautiful writers. We're looking for companies that can, can give the judges panel a, a book, and the judges panel can read it without getting confused about what, what they can expect out of each company. All of the above amounts to 65 points. We've never had a company score 65 points. They're usually in the neighborhood of 50 or so. But then the final 35%, and this is the part where we get involved, the city will give us the rates from each company, and we will extrapolate those rates, and the, the best price, the lowest price will get 35%. The next lowest price will get a percentage of that 35%. Then those will be added to the points that you've gotten above for the book itself, and there's 100 points total. I just did Claremore, Oklahoma, and the winning proposer there scored 77 points. I think the, the next closest was 74 points. Okay. Next slide, which is Slide Number Six. What we're proposing at this moment in time, and all of this is gonna be worked out between SWS and the City of Pine Bluff, once-a-week collection, the contractor supplies a 96-gallon cart, resident can order additional 96-gallon carts. Right now, there's a limit of only one additional. There won't be a limit going forward. Customers with more than two carts can also put up, put out up to three bags of waste. Option Two, once-a-week collection, contractor supplies the 96-gallon carts, just like Option One, residents can order additional 96-gallon carts, but there are no bags available in this option. All options will allow for unusual accumulation collection for a predetermined fee. And I'll give you an example. We've had, over the years, that I was with your current provider, we had homes that people moved out of, and they, they put out more, when they cleaned out the home, they put out more trash than one truck could hold. This will, that will be an unusual, unusual accumulation, excuse me, and that, that individual will work with the, with the vendor to come up with a, a fee that they can pay. Next slide. Bulk and brush collection combined for a total of four cubic yards. This is what we're going to propose. Four cubic yards, you might say, well, how much is that? Just lay down two refrigerators side by side, that's about four cubic yards. It's no- It's, no call-in is required right now. The way you have it, you have to call in the day before your trash is collected in order to get your bulk and brush picked up. If you don't call in the day before, then it's going to be at least a week later. In this situation, no call-in required. It's collected on your trash day, your garbage day. Option 2A, monthly collection, call-in required. But we're going to, we're going to recommend giving vendors the the ability to propose pricing for both of these options. Slide number eight, commercial and roll-off collection. Rates to be submitted based on size of container and frequency of collection. That's the same as it is right now. In other words, you may have a business and it may be a a six-yard and it, this business has it one day a week, this business down the street has an eight-yard that goes five times a week. And those those matrices will be submitted for all of their pricing. Facility services for the city to continue, that means all city facilities, free of charge. One of the things that's already come out of one of our meetings is Heston Stadium, that will be, that will be included in the free service. New containers, again, for all of this work will be required. And the same, same there, same deal about unusual accumulation collection. And my example there would be if a commercial customer closes down a part of their their shop, could be, it could be a complex, it could be anything like that, they can't just put the waste beside the container. That would be called an unusual accumulation and they will need to call the vendor and and get it worked out to have that extra waste picked up. General provision, all poly carts, dumpsters, and roll-off containers provided by the contractor will be new. Equipment used by the contractor will be no older than four years at the start of the contract. Liquidated damages to be included to allow the city to charge vendor for specific failures. It won't be, it won't be calling the company in here to meet before the city council and say, you better not do this again. No, these damages are going to be spelled out and it's going to get into the financial pocketbook of the vendor if they don't resolve the issue. That's the liquidated damage, financial liquidation. GPS tracking, tracking software and camera equipment will be required on all firms submitting an RFP. Reports will be required to be sent to the city weekly. I mentioned to Ms. Campbell, Chief Campbell, would you like to have these once a month, once a quarter? She said, I'd like to have them every week. So that's what we put in there. And now I'll take any questions. Councilman Mays, I think you had another question.
I guess all options will allow for unusual accumulation, collection?
Yes, sir.
With undetermined fee, what is that?
Well, what what, we're going to, we're going to give the the prospective proposers an opportunity to address that. And and when I say that, is it, is it by the hour? Is it by the amount of waste itself? What type of waste is it? Can it be, can it be picked up by manpower? Right now, I mean, a long time ago, we used to use in the in the industry what they call grapple trucks, where you had a claw that came out, picked this up, put it over into the truck. You don't see a lot of that anymore. Whether that's required or not will be up to the city. We're going to put in the specifications whatever the city wants us to put in there. We're going to, we're going to recommend from our experience, and I I stress, that's what you get with us. We've, we've been there and done this all over the place. And I think we can, we can come up with a document that will get you a good price, but more importantly, get you a good contractor, one that's safe, one that's reputable, one that's, you don't have to worry about their financial capability, things of that nature.
So, Mr. Weely?
Yes, sir.
Basically, you are going to want to manage our waste picker company?
No, no. We, when, when the vendor is chosen and the city council votes to go with the vendor, we're, we're out of it. Our work is done. Yes, sir.
And so with this bulk and brush collection, you said one is a weekly collection, one is a monthly collection, so...
And then the one with no calling required, I'm pretty sure that's going to cost more to get that, but I mean, that is a, that is nice to have, be able to have something out there and not have to worry about calling to get it in. I guess my, you said the four cubic yards, you said that's like laying down two refrigerators? Is that what you said?
Yes, sir. That, I mean, that, I'm just giving you that as an example as the size of four cubic yards. A refrigerator is about two cubic yards.
Okay.
You put two of them side by side, and if you want to say that, if you want to put in the specifications six yards, 10 yards, that's up to the city.
All right. Let me ask this too, and I know we're going to talk about it more once, I guess, once all those meetings get started, but I think currently you're supposed to bundle up the limbs and things like that. I'm, I'm not sure if most people
No.
want to do that, you know? And so I guess we can try to get away from that and just, as long as it's maybe in a pile.
Right. And 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 the mayor and Ms. Campbell are going to, going to start hearing from not only citizens, but from each of you on, this would be a better way to do this. For example, right now, on brush, it's two inches in diameter. Our specification is normally called for four inches in diameter, four foot in length, but put out there in a way that that a person can pick it up and put it into the truck. Okay? And and that way, it's, it's still, you can still be productive. You can, that gets you the best price. But on the, on the other hand, and I helped, I helped write this way back there, but on on bulk collection, it's everything. And it was unlimited. This will be limited to either four yards or six yards or eight yards or whatever the city wants us to put in the specifications. And that's what we do, is we just write the specifications and then when the, when the successful contractor wins this, it's, it's for them to work with the city on, on as to what they have submitted pricing for. We're, we don't represent any company. We're out of it at that moment in time. In Claremore, Oklahoma, I asked the public works director, I said, would you like me to give each member of the council my business card? He said, no need, you're almost done. And I said, okay, I understand. And and truly, that's what it is. Now, many of you, most of you know me, and most of you still have my name and number in your phone, and if you ultimately want to call me, and it's a year from now, I'm going to answer the phone. So, but but we're not going to, let's say it's company XYZ, I'm not going to be communicating with company XYZ on, how are you doing? What's going on? What's, is there a problem? What we bring to the table, though, is our relationship with each one of these companies, and that ensures that that the city of Pine Bluff is going to get multiple proposals from multiple companies where they get competitive. And trust me, I I've dealt with it for 30 years in Pine Bluff. It has, it's, it's a contract that all waste companies would like to have. So you're going to have, you're going to have multiple companies wanting to do your work.
Mr. Weely?
Yes, Mr. Fels.
And I have several questions, I'll just shoot you over and I'll email, but I am very excited, like Councilmember Brown was saying, about the bulk and brush collection.
Yeah.
I think one of the
Yes, sir.
most frustrating things that I see sometimes in a citizen's seat is, you know, there'd be like the bulk items on a curb, and I understand waste management, they may not be set up to pick that up the first time they see it, but sometimes it'll be there, you know, after the third and the second, fourth, fifth, and so on, so on. So I would like to see us just being able to go ahead and get that up without the citizen calling in. Now, I see option 1A and option 2A. Are we going to give each company the opportunity to choose which option they would prefer to do, or are we going to say we want this option?
Well, either way, either way, councilman, but but let's just say that they're going to, they're going to submit pricing for option one and two.
Got it.
And and when you, when you, here's the way this works. Let's just say we've got six companies that have submitted their books. And through the, through the judging of the narrative part of the book, the 65-point part, and then looking at the pricing, SWS and the city get their heads together and we say, we've narrowed this down to two finalists. Okay, we, we have a meeting with the two finalists, and I'm talking about we, the city, and, but we'll be represented at at that meeting. We give, let's just say a company has a great price, but they've got a few exceptions to the specifications. First thing we'll ask is, is there a way you can eliminate the exceptions you have to your submittal? And if they can, then, you know, they, they look better. Let's say a company looks so good with the book part, the 65% part, but their pricing is way high. We'll give you, and and both of these instances, we'll give the finalist 24 hours to submit to the city a best and final offer. And what that does, if they want to clean up their pricing, or that other company, if they want to eliminate those exceptions that they had stated in their submittal, then then it comes down to, what are we, what is the city going to recommend comes before the city council? And and let's just say it's company XYZ and company XYZ, I'll be here, but company XYZ will be here and they will be ready to to answer questions as well. Yes, sir.
Councilmember Brunson?
I just wanted to say that I think it's important that we leverage expertise when it comes to contracts, because that's not, I know it's not my specialty, right? So I think it's important that we do have someone that can come in and help us navigate the resources and the things that we need and things that we might not overlook when we are choosing a company for our community and for our citizens. Again, you know, everybody, we know we want our trash picked up, right? You know, that's definitely the common goal.
Yes.
But we also want to make sure that we're getting the best of the best, and sometimes we can't see what people who have been in the industry can see. So I appreciate the fact that you have the expertise around it and can bring us some insight as we're choosing who we'll have as our next contract for the city.
Thank you. I appreciate you saying that.
Clerk Roberts?
Oh, sir, I just want to note that I missed the recycling component of the proposal. Is that one that we will consider or?
It's up to the city.
It's something we'll look at.
Yeah.
We'll ask that it be included as a possible pricing option, that it would be an add-on.
Yes. And and what I'm, what I'm proposing is not finalized. I mean, what you've, what you've seen in just this short presentation is not finalized. It only is finalized once, once the city agrees this is, and the city attorney specifically agrees that this is the format and this, this describes the service we want under the new contract. Yes, sir.
Councilman Mays?
So, Mr. Weely, so you're more acting like a third-party administrator?
No, sir. No, we're, we're...
You're not, you're not the actual administrator of this?
No, no, sir. No, sir.
So you're acting as a third party?
Just a consultant.
Consultant.
Helping the city.
Helping us, okay, to find a better solution to the the waste product.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, that's the whole thing, okay? I see, I see what you're saying.
That's what I said about 10 times, but, okay.
Yeah, wasn't it? Y'all never did explain it.
Yes, I did, I did, but that's okay. Because we're here now, but I'm just, for the record, I did say that.
Well, I had to make sure, because y'all going around.
No, we're not. We're here now. Any further discussion? Councilman Lockit?
Yes, sir.
So, how, how is the cost of waste collection going to be impacted by the the landfill? How, this will be the first time probably in the last 50, 60 years where the landfill and the waste collector are not the same people?
Well, they might be the same. I mean, they, they could be the same. Your incumbent is going to be a proposer, and they, you can't rule them out. Now, I did, I did the city of Springdale. Just like Pine Bluff, I renewed the Springdale contract as a waste management employee years and years. I renewed it probably six times. Sometimes we just added a year or two to the contract to make a change in the contract, and that was the, that was the trade-off. But but the punchline of that, when, when we did this, this effort with the city of Springdale, Waste Management did not win. Waste Management has the landfill in Tonnitown adjacent to Springdale. The company that did win still uses that landfill. The company that wins here, I predict, will still use this landfill. And it's called the Waste Management landfill, but it's, it's owned by Jefferson County. It's leased by Waste Management. But that's a great question.
Yes, but what I'm saying is, for how long? So that, that, we would still be charged to dump there?
It's, depends on the specifications. Right now, you're charged, if you're an individual, to go there. Are you talking about the city of Pine Bluff?
Well, I'm talking about city residents in particular, that, that what I'm saying is that if we negotiate with the new, with the new vendor to do the, the garbage collection?
Right.
And then we have to negotiate with the landfill?
No, no, you, you, no, sir. When, when they submit, when they submit their pricing, each one of the proposers will include disposal. It will include the landfill cost, it will include the travel to and from the landfill, it will include the land, I mean, it will, it will take into consideration the landfill hours wherever it may be. Somebody may, may submit to the city and take this waste to a landfill in DeWitt in Little Rock or in Jefferson County. And there may be one south of here, I'm, I'm not exactly sure about that. Great question.
Hey, if I could touch on that really quickly, because that's one of the first things I think we asked about when, when we first, I think in our first meeting. And one of the things that I found to be interesting, that I wasn't aware of, is that several of these vendors already have contracts with owners of these landfills all over the state. And so when they are, and and I'm not saying all of them do right now, but it's based upon their contract relationship with the different landfills. And I think that what, what we were informed of is that some of them will dispose 50 miles away and still be able to maintain a competitive pricing. And the other thing, too, that in my conversations with Waste Management is, the current landfill is almost full and they're in the process of, you know, planning and building toward a new landfill. And I think that that's something that has an impact on the entire industry based on their contract relationship. their contract relationships with the landfills. So that wouldn't necessarily affect us directly, is, is the point that I think I just heard in previous meetings and tonight.
All good points, and, and probably what they're talking about is, at the existing property where the landfill is, there's probably acreage where an expansion can take place. Not, not building a complete new landfill, but expanding the current one into, into acreage that has never been used. Another thing I told the mayor and Chief Campbell, when I was with Waste Management, I, I did the municipal work with cities, and I competed fiercely with other companies. At the same time, I did third-party landfill sales for Waste Management, and some of my best, biggest customers were my competitors. So, so I sold them access to our landfills, and it was an interesting relationship. But it all works. But, but, but Councilman Lockett, when you get a price, it's gonna include, it's, they're gonna tell you what landfill they're going to use, and it's gonna include, that will be in the price. If, if the home price is X number of dollars a month, that's what it is. It's no more, it's no less.
I have one more additional question.
Yeah.
So, once we receive those bids, let's just say we have company, Company A, Company B, Company C, will there be some kind of mechanism, let's just say Company B and C, they're already servicing the city somewhere in Arkansas or in the United States, will there be a mechanism for contacting leaders or officials in those cities so we can get some, you know, honest reviews on what kind of service they've been receiving?
Yes, great point, and, and the specifications will say, what cities are you currently serving that is a lack size of Pine Bluff, Arkansas? And tell me who to contact, what their email address is, what their phone number is. And so that's their reference list that will be submitted with their proposals.
Councilman Brown.
Yes, sir. I know we're, the whole goal of this is to improve services, but I just wanna make sure that, and, and you're the expert on this, but if there's something that's currently in our contract that's better, maybe a better deal than maybe some other cities are getting, I don't wanna lose that in turn for something else. So I guess, I wanna make sure that we keep any, any special benefits or perks that we have in our current contract, and then expand on it.
The, the one thing I see in the city of Pine Bluff contract, and, and this is, this is left up to us finalizing the RFP, that I don't see in any other contract, is the, the self-hall concept on roll-off. And your city attorney knows me quite well, as I have complained about it for years and years as Waste Management, but it, it's probably going to be, again, in the RFP, where, where self-hall is allowed. And that is, if roll-off is even in the contract. There, there've been various discussions about where is roll-off going to be in this new contract? Is it gonna be in there for just the permanent, full-time customers? Will it include the temporary customers, which is mainly construction? Or will it not be in there at all? And, and I'm talking about the roll-off or the temp roll-off, temporary roll-off. But, but if it's in there, then I predict that the, the specifications will, the city will decide, let's leave the self-hall clause that's currently in our existing contract in the new contract.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry.
Councilman Phil.
I'm trying to contain my questions. Would it be a good idea or possible for us to maybe have like a public town hall, just give citizens the opportunity to kinda share ideas in terms of what they would wanna see from the contract? Not saying we can, you know, accept every idea and recommendation, but just kinda get feedback on what type of services they want.
Yeah, I think that what we can do in this process, and, and we would do this with our selection committee, hearing from people, have a public comment period, where people could email their public comments, and maybe we would do something online, maybe we'd do something in person. I think that's up to the committee. But, and let me say this, just to clarify, too, I mentioned earlier that what, what we would be getting from SWS LLC is assistance in navigating this process, navigating the negotiations, in a way that will benefit us in terms of the contract, benefit our, our constituents, but also help us do this in this timeline period because they are experts in it, and we're, we're just not. And the other thing I wanted to make clear is that I have already gotten commitments from a selection, a local selection committee, so I want you all to hear that. It will include Councilman Glenn Brown, so someone from city council, Mr. Michael Gillyard, so someone from economic development, and the reason that we, Chief Campbell and I thought it would be great to pull on him is because he is currently working very closely with Mr. Matthews and Public Works, and we thought that it would be beneficial for him to be a part of this process, so he agreed to do so. Mr. Larry Reynolds with City Planning, Tony Pena from Liberty Utilities, Ken Johnson, who's the director of our wastewater facility or department, and then Joyce Campbell, our chief of staff, and then our city attorney, Althea Hayden Scott. So I think we have an extremely strong, knowledgeable committee with plenty of, you know, institutional memory and just expertise in terms of representing the interests of the city from different perspectives, while being able to lean in on what we would have from SWS in terms of expertise that is specifically rooted in solid waste disposal, in all facets of that. And so I feel very comfortable that as we have this, have the next discussion about waiving competitive bid for the services that will help us get through this process and get a new contract with whomever. And the other thing I'd like to make clear is that this, this process not only leverages the relationships of SWS, but also is, because they are a third-party consultant, they don't have any dog in the fight with who we select, and we make the selection, once we have all the information and go through this process, and that's one thing I'm excited about as well.
I have a question.
Councilman, Councilman, go ahead.
If we were to choose another company in, in employment selection, how, how would that process go?
Well, what, what we require in the specifications is a list of personnel. So you're gonna, you're gonna get the number of people, whether it be customer service, whether it be what I would call technicians or mechanics, you're gonna get drivers, you're gonna get container delivery people. But what they're going to list is their, their years in the business, we're gonna see from, from the federal scores, what are their safety records? And, and all of this is gonna be judged by this selection committee, this judges committee. And by the way, we, we set up a session with the judges committee where we call it a training session, and it's just, it's just telling them how this works. We've done it in, we've done it in 27 cities. The, the contract that, that we use as a, as a model, that will, will be, the Pine Bluff contract will be modeled from, I mean, developed from, has been vetted by Althea, 27 city attorneys. Well, maybe 25, some have used us more than once. So, and I, I want to tell Lynn Lantrop, one of my partners, that, well, actually, it's been vetted by a whole lot more city attorneys than that, because everyone who has submitted over the years that we've done this, has had their attorney vet it as well. But what we've, what we've given the city of Pine Bluff is the, the Springdale contract, without Springdale's name in it, but it's an Arkansas-based contract. And she will look at your current contract that you have right this moment, that's been amended four or five times, I think four times, and, and then start comparing it language-wise with what we, what we got this, well, what the city of Springdale ultimately approved. Now, when, when a company submits their RFP, their proposal, Exhibit A is the contract. And so they're not only initialing every page of the proposal, but they're signing the contract. And if the city council votes for a particular company, then that part, there's no further negotiation. That's the deal. And then all, the city council votes to approve it, the mayor signs it, and you're in business. And, and making the transition, I thought this might be where you were headed with this, but making the transition is a, a big part of the submittal. How smooth, seamless can the transition be? And that's, that's gonna be vital for the judges to read, understand, and, and judge accordingly. The next thing I'll say, maybe the last thing I'll say, but, but our fee is, is very, it's, it's very respected. I mean, it's a good fee, it's not over the top, but, but the vendor, the city will pay us in three segments throughout this calendar between now and November, three times, and it's, it's been presented to the mayor's office. In the first 30 days that the new vendor is doing work in Pine Bluff, they reimburse the city the entire cost that we have charged. So the net cost, as the mayor said earlier, is, net, net cost is zero to the city. You, you, you pay us, but you get reimbursed. And the companies don't disagree with that. They like it. They like it because they know, they know us, they know our work, they know we're credible. And I'm not gonna pat myself on the back any more than that, but we are, we are credible, we, we've got a respect in the industry, and it, you're gonna end up with a good, good vendor.
Can you also share, didn't, when we met, you were mentioning something about your relationship with the Arkansas Municipal League?
Yes, great cities make a great state. As, as mayor of Magnolia, I, I was, I never became president of the municipal league. I, I resigned after my 13th year. I had three years left of a four-year term, but I got into talking trash for a living. And, but I became vice president of the municipal league, and that was when the late Don Zimmerman was there. But, but I knew your current executive director very well, still do. Mark and I go back a long way. I think, I think he'll, he'll speak up for me.
Do they have some kind of vendor list or something?
Uh, I'm-
Okay, I must be, that's okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that you and I have talked about that.
Okay.
Because I'm not aware of it.
Okay.
They, they probably do, but I've not, I've not heard of it in the waste industry.
Okay.
Not heard of it in the waste industry. Yes, sir.
Mr. Willie, uh, one of the things that worries me about this metric is, what happens if one of the competing Waste Management companies hires someone like you to draft up all the, the right things to say? Because what I'm saying is, very little of this, would one be able to verify once this presented, like, the financial strength?
Trust, trust me, they're not going to do that, because they know what my answer would be, is that I don't, I don't play in that, in both, both arenas. I just play in this one, where, where we develop the RFP, we don't develop the books. I've developed books for, for the last 30 years, but I, I would say since April of '22, when I retired, the, the ways that they present proposals, I'm talking about the way that they answer questions, I'm, I'm out of sync with that. That's, there've been too many changes. Too many changes in equipment, too many changes in, in pricing. I heard, one of my good friends lives in the suburbs of Little Rock, but it's not, it's not in a city, and, and they have what you call subscription service, and they have a company that, he told me, he said, I just got my bill and it had a 25% increase. The largest increase in my 30 years that I ever did was 3%. So that's, and, and we, by the way, our specifications will require companies on the anniversary date to only use the Bureau of Labor Statistics, federal government, Garbage and Trash Index, and it cannot be more than 5%. And so that, that's protection for all of your citizens, as well as all of your businesses. Yes, sir?
Mr. Willie, thank you again for answering the question. You know, I can't say personally, Waste Management has gotten a lot better. I'm just saying. And when I call them, I monitor the call and see, how long does it take to get back to the citizen? Trash can, or pickup, or just any, any waste out there? Now, they're on a whole nother level now, as far as I can see it. You know, as for the city councilman, I have to, when the people call me, citizens call me, immediately I call them.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
I know.
Their own time, their own time delivery has gotten better.
Right.
Can you, we gonna have somebody on that same level now? Because if you had a waste sitting out there for two, two, two days more than what it's supposed to be out there, they, they, these council men and women are gonna get a bunch of calls. I just wanna make sure we gonna have that level.
You're, you're either gonna have that level, or you're gonna, you're gonna have liquidated damages charged to that company. And let me explain, that, right now, you've got, you've got one or two liquidated damages in your contract.
Explain liquidated.
That means if, if you, if you miss a, if you miss a pickup-
Uh-huh.
And you don't have a, you don't have a good reason, in other words, it's, the street was closed, something like that. If you don't have an irrefutable reason, then you pick it up, and by X number of hours or days, we'll probably say hours, and then if you miss that, that's where your weekly report comes in, then you're charged a defined liquidated damage that you've signed off to in your contract. Now, you say, well, how do you collect the money from the vendor? Right now, Liberty Utilities bills the residential piece of this. The, the commercial and roll-off business is billed by the vendor itself. Be hard to get that money, but you, you get with Liberty Utilities and say, hold up $12,000 from what we pay the vendor, because we have these liquidated damages. And the mayor's going to work that out with- And the mayor's going to work that out with, with Liberty Utilities, just through a memorandum of understanding. And money's money. I don't care if it's residential money, I don't care if it's roll-off money or commercial money. And that way, you're not, you're not calling up somebody and having to get on their case. You're, you're getting in their pocketbook. And that, we've, we've proven gets, gets action.
So, Mr. Willie, so you're saying that even if it's on the commercial side, you can still tax on the residential side to recoup the, the commercial end?
Yeah, I mean, you, you're, you're going for the money that, that you have some control over that goes to the vendor.
Okay.
And that's, that's the only reason I mentioned Liberty and residential, because the city, city has a little bit of control over that money.
Yes, sir.
And, and you could say, out of your commercial revenue, uh, send us fifteen thousand. Well, they may, they may not, but, but you don't have to do that, because you've got the residential billing, which will more than accommodate, where, where there's one or two liquidated damages in the current contract, there will be sixteen to seventeen different categories of liquidated damages in the new contract. So it, it ensures, Councilman Matthews, it ensures good service or cost. Now, you don't want to make your money by liquidated damages. You want your citizens to get, get good service.
Absolutely.
Councilman Fels, when you, when you started talking about, uh, uh, material out by the street, now, I've been down here for the last two weeks, I've been on the same street twice, and there's, there's material at the curb. In fact, weeds are grown up around the material. And that will not happen under this new contract. It will be picked up. Now, it's, it's, it's either, it's either part of the contract, or it's an unusual accumulation that is gonna have to be discussed between the vendor and the owner of the property.
You said that won't happen?
Yes, sir.
You said that won't happen?
Well, I mean, not without a cost. It, I can't guarantee it, I'm not the vendor, but, but if, if, if it happens, then you're going to, say, charge the vendor, Mr. Penner, with Liberty Utilities, charge the vendor whatever this liquidated damage amounts to.
Per the contract?
Per, per the contract. Yes, sir, Mr. Lockett?
Yes, now, how does this trickle down to the resident? Because their inconvenience and, uh, waste disposal is one of the few things that is billed to you, but if they don't do what they're supposed to do, the, the vendor, I mean, the resident doesn't have, you know, uh, a rebate of sorts.
I predict that, uh, the way, when you see this written out in the, in the specifications, you're gonna see how it, it protects the resident. And the resident doesn't have to have, doesn't have to have a say-so in, in getting on to the vendor. The city's gonna do it via this contract. The vendor's gonna do it via this contract. And they're gonna resolve it, or they're gonna pay the price. Now, if, if they pay the price, I think back when I was mayor, if, if, if I were the mayor and they paid this price, then I would send somebody from my street department out there and get it. We've gotten paid for it through liquidated damages. But at the same time, I would still have the liquidated damages. But that's, that's just me trying to figure out how I would, I would do it if I put on my city hat. Now, if I put on my waste hat, like I'm a solid waste industry personnel, I would say, get that before we get charged a liquidated damage. And that's, that's the one thing I was able to do. I don't know how it came about, but when I worked for Waste Management, I could get things like that done. But it was always, after it had gotten bad, before I could get things done. And it won't get, it won't get that way under this new setup. We've, we've experienced, we, I'm sorry, but we've experienced just about, and I'm talking about the three of us, Mr.